Are we all ready? Yeah, I know, well. Okay, welcome everybody to the May meeting of the Plymouth School Board. Please bear with us as we try to use our... This is the maiden voyage of our new technology. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
What we believe is the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Opening setting of the agenda, are there any additions or corrections?
Yes, there's just one because the process was able to conclude last night. And we would like to add the naming of the Lincoln Jager High Principal and Washington Principal this evening.
Do I have a motion to set the agenda?
Second.
All in favor say aye. Oh wait, we gotta wait, wait. Sandy's gotta open it for Looney. Does something pop up? Oh, there it is. Okay. We all said aye, right? We have two things!
Yay means aye?
Yay means aye. Okay. Motion carries. All right, audience participation for agenda items. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to one of the agenda items? If so, we'll take your name and speak. Okay, you'll have another opportunity.
Somebody asked me, yeah, Paul.
Paul.
Paul, I'm still...
Okay, when we get... Which item do you want to talk about?
Bus maintenance.
Okay, when we get there, we'll recognize you again, okay? Okay. Item two. Any other audience members that want to talk about an agenda item? Okay. Item two, consent agenda. Is there anything that needs to be pulled out of the consent agenda?
I have nothing this evening.
You can?
I'm thinking.
Okay.
I'm sorry, turn around. Is that where we put the additions?
No, we put the additions in the business agenda.
Okay, that's what I need to... Oh, maybe I didn't refresh.
Business agenda items are 3.9 and 3.2.
That's the scroll, thank you. I'm sorry.
Okay. All right, could I have a motion to accept the... Approve the consent agenda?
Certainly.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye or yay. Opposed, no. You have to say it too. All in favor, say aye. Oh my gosh, okay.
They don't know a word on...
Yeah, this is... I told... This is the maiden... We're getting used to this. Okay.
This is the...
This is the maiden voyage on this, so this is better.
And you can follow it up there if you want to see what we're doing here. Okay. All right. Motion carries. Item 3.0, business transactions. 3.1, award contract for before or after school program.
Roger.
Is Liz out there?
Yes.
There's Liz. Liz Ritchie, could you stand up a second please? Liz Ritchie has been running the before or after school program for how many years now, Liz?
Well, I started in 99, in August of 99, working with Marshall Star Development Center.
And so, you know, of course Liz runs a learning tree system and this... And we would like to recommend an extension of another year on that contract. They've done a wonderful job. I've got a whole list of parents that will stand up and talk about that if you'd like. But we would just like to recommend that you extend that for one more year, please.
I can lend my accolades because they run the same program at Argus Elementary School. Fantastic.
Is that a motion?
Oh, yes.
One second.
All right.
Are there any... I'm sorry, I have a question. Are there any changes to it?
No changes at all. No price changes, no program changes. Everything would remain the same for right now.
It's a one-year extension.
One-year extension.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, item 3.2, report of progress, school of... I want to say that in...
Who's bringing up the program?
Just areas.
Got it, good. Brian Boland is here from Barton Cove. They give you the report.
Hi, Brian.
Hi. Larry North here. Just wanted to give you a brief update on progress of the demolition so far. And if you haven't been able to hit the building regularly or see some of these behind-the-scenes things, then this will get you up to speed. And I'll try to move through these pretty quickly, so if you have questions, feel free to stop me or you can answer them at the end. This is just a concrete core sample from the pool deck. We took samples in multiple areas to assess the condition of the concrete. And you'll see later, some of the areas are staying, some of them are coming out. And that was just based on the analysis of that. This picture actually shows the pool wall being removed from the pool equipment room side and starting to move equipment into the site. This is the other side of that opening, pool emptied, and the blue membrane coming off of that aluminum shell of the pool. And again, equipment's starting to move in. Kind of the next step, getting that actual aluminum shell out. Most of it's out in this case. You can see the dirt and gravel that fill underneath, especially the shallow areas of the pool because of the way it's constructed. That dirt's used to fill in any of the shallow spots. And there's less dirt when you have your diving well area. And in this case, they've actually constructed a ramp out of the dirt to get equipment up to the second floor. It's more of that same progress occurring. And again here, some of these are cell phone photos, so they're a little blurry sometimes. There's an observation area upstairs. This is that actually coming apart. And you can see down in the lower right-hand corner, the doors to the outside leading to that mechanical area. So the shell is completely removed at this point. And an overall shot from your pool, Richard. And here in the background, just to the left of the equipment there, the yellow and white area that's looking into the locker room, most of that lockers, the shower area, have been removed by this point in the project. And you can start to see just above that piece of equipment, where some of the concrete deck has been removed and columns are starting to come out. You can see things with an X on them still pending to be removed. Another shot of that same area with a little more progress. And this is actually looking down through that concrete slab in one of the areas scheduled for removal. You can see the second floor below. So in most areas, we're actually building our floor back in with a new structure that isn't deteriorated and has columns that are in logical places for the way that we determined you would want to use the space. This is a close-up of some of the concrete before it was taken out. Some of these things are hidden until you either do the cores like we did or actually remove that membrane. There's soft areas and cracked spots that we really ideally don't want to have. And similarly, under a steel staircase, you can see the type of corrosion that's just kind of inherent in having an indoor pool in a space like this for a long period of time. That's the progress of the demolition. If you have questions about that, I can try to answer them. It's more or less on schedule at this point, meaning that demolition's complete when we're ready for new construction to begin. We're planning to take bids on the 8th of this month and come back to this board on the 15th to review bids and decide on a direction to move forward.
You say we are pretty well on schedule?
Yes. While we plan. Yes. There's a lot of... A lot of progress has been made that if you walk in there, you'd notice it from the first day until now. From this point forward, over the next two weeks approximately, there'll be a lot more of what we would call detail, refinement, demolition taking place. So you'll probably see less progress from here on out, but it's even more critical that they do this part correctly and stuff.
You could, to this point, use a smaller hammer there.
Yeah.
And there's some really big hammers being used.
Any other questions for the meeting? Thank you. Do you have a vote remaining?
No, just not yet.
Okay. Item 3.3, bus maintenance proposal. Is that you, Roger?
Yep. A big part of what Dan and I and all of our support people do is try to present you with options on how to do things well. The last few years have been very challenging with regard to scarce resources for the district, for not just our district, for every district. We have been stretched and pushed in a lot of ways. And we've looked at many different things and you've already acted on some of those and are considering other ones. This is a proposal that we first talked about a couple of years ago, about is there a different way to do maintenance which would allow us on buses to be able to use our resources in different ways? So we approached Tom Weir's about this. And Tom first looked at it and we talked and just didn't really go anywhere farther with it at that point. And then this spring, we asked Tom to take a look at it again and get more serious because of some other things that had happened within Rick's department, within transportation. So at this time, I'd just like to introduce Tom Weir's. And Tom has a number of the staff people with him who all have been involved in putting together this proposal for us. Tom?
Thank you, Roger. I've got just a short presentation here just to kind of bring the board and the community up to speed. What we're doing as an organization, how it might apply here with the school corporation. So, you know, again, we'll just talk about our organization, what is we're doing, our proposal, how we would vote out, if it made sense for the school corporation. So, a little about our company. For those of you who don't... aren't familiar with us, we're an industrial park here in Plymouth. Been around since 1964, so we're looking forward to celebrating our 50th anniversary in a couple of years here in the community. Recently completed our ISO certification, which is very unique in our service, in our space that we operate, we're a service organization in the maintenance world. That's generally associated with manufacturing. It just speaks to our commitment. We started four years ago on a formal quality journey to continuously improve ourselves. We have about 90 employees with three locations, so we have a dealership here. In Plymouth, we have one in Losport and also a third location in Lafayette. So about our organization, we started 10 years ago with a single company called Miller Supply, developing a maintenance program. Many, many businesses are forced to, in the struggles of today's economy, how to do more with less. And so, how do you optimize resources and like? And we started 10 years ago with Miller on a win-win sort of philosophy, where we would maintain their trucks and help them drive costs and extend asset life and compliance and like. And we still have that, that Miller has sold a practice there. But we still have the relationship, so we manage over 100 and some pieces of equipment for them in Indiana, Michigan, Ohio, New York. So we do the maintenance on some equipment, but we manage the process on others. So we've been doing what we're proposing for some time now. This is a little bit on our mission statement, helping our clients extend asset life, increase vehicle uptime, reduce costs, and improve the safety and compliance. That's... Those are four key things that our customers are looking for when they want to use our programs. As far as the... You know, some of the specifics on the proposal, and talking with Dan and Roger over a number of meetings, looking for a long-term, longer-term solution. Obviously, when people look to outsource or get out of the maintenance business, it's not something you can easily get in and out of. There's people and equipment and things involved with that, facilities and like. So we proposed a 10-year agreement where we review the plan of maintenance, which is that's the maintenance that's done on a scheduled basis. Then the repairs, the repairs that would be required, as well as take care of the tire program, which we administer, you can still get the state pricing for those tires. Of course, we provide for an extra provision if things were not going well for whatever reason. It's not a situation where either party would be locked in. We would have that clearly defined and like. So could also do it in an orderly fashion. But again, we have these provisions with other clients. And we've never exercised one, thankfully, but they are out there. And then the proposal would be fixed monthly charge per person for the management. And that fixed monthly charge also includes our profit and our overheads. So it's designed to put us on the same side of the table, the win-win. And then what we would have is a low-market hourly rate for any work that was done on an hourly basis. As far as some of the things that we would be doing as part of the program, of course, we would... And this is what we do today, so it's not new for us. We would create department transportation mandated files or any other files that would be mandated as far as the vehicles, so service records and the like. So if there's an audit or inspections or such, that would be readily available. We would... We develop a planned maintenance program on each piece of equipment. So if there are different routes, different needs based on the age of the equipment or the technology involved in the equipment, then each unit gets a specific plan designed for that and that gets executed on whatever the basis. So that's kind of the planned maintenance. I touched on the repairs. And then we also do key metrics. I've given Dan and Roger samples of our reporting. We develop key metrics, so whether it be cost per mile or the number of unplanned repairs really gives our clients an opportunity to have much greater visibility of where their spend is going, how their equipment's performing, which units need replaced maybe more rapidly than others and such. So we try to get out of some of the guessing, if you will. In addition to that, other programming elements include annual maintenance budgeting. We have regular meetings and communications set up. Generally, once we get through the integration phase, which is all documented and spelled out, who's doing what, then we go into sort of a periodic review, which generally it's a quarterly meeting. We sit down with the clients and go over the scorecards, talk about things. There's opportunities for improvement, those are discussed and such. Tire monitoring placement, annual. And then, of course, part of our program is annual bus inspection, which is unique to the school corporations. We understand that, we do that work today. Or sometimes schools will outsource a portion of that work, they get overloaded, they can't do inspection schedules and like. So again, very familiar with your equipment and a lot of your needs. As far as, you know, what does this look like, the general discussion at this point is that we would... I think Roger, Dan and I discussed in July, we want to start big. I believe that's the fiscal year or the beginning of the... This will be the beginning of the fiscal year. We would have two appointed technicians on our staff to handle, specifically, handle Plymouth school buses. And then we'd have two backups. And the reason we would do that is in the morning, we would make... We'd have a technician available before the first driver gets to touch his bus. Under discussion, we would have this little bus parked in our facility in Plymouth here, where we have sufficient parking for the buses and as well as the cars for the drivers. But we would have somebody on staff there ready. If there was a problem in the morning, it would be addressed before the driver took off, so there'd be no delay. We also work until 6:00. So we would have technicians on staff. If a bus came in late and the driver identified something that was wrong with the bus, so we'd have full coverage. And then, of course, those people will take vacations and such, so they would have a backup in place. So... And that's, you know, real high level. And I wanted to spend most of the time if there was, you know, questions that I could answer those specifically.
If I could just make one more comment before you start with that. What Dan and Candy and I, and in conversations earlier with Rick, really late before Tom, was we want to have a proposal that is comparable or better to our maintenance and we don't have the money to spend anymore. So the task they were given was you need to design a program that's going to be within the financial boundary we've got. The proposals and details that we've got are basically level in the near future. The advantages that we look at long run is bringing in professional services to take a look at those kinds of value-added things that could improve what we do, make it better in the future. Those are just potentials, we understand. But we think from other experiences that some of us have had, I personally have had with this type of service, and that Tom's group has had, that that potential is very real. So I just wanted to put that over long terms in the cost factor as that was what we initially assigned, was we don't really have the money to be looking at spending for. We need to find ways to spend less and still do the same things matter in the long run.
Tom, a question. What about priority? For example, if we had bus breakdown or it means immediate repair, where would we fall in the priority list?
Excellent question. So we have currently 14 service technicians and an additional seven body shop technicians. So we have 21 technicians in our facility. We currently run from Saturday AM to 6:00 PM. So we would have the capacity to dispatch somebody and we would, you know, we would have priority service with us. We have, you know, those clients that are on our programs like this get priority service. So we have the ability to make somebody available.
And do you have someone available, because we have extracurricular activities, as you're aware?
Correct.
Like we're over North Ridge on a football game and it breaks down at 10 o'clock at night.
Right. They'll have... They will have a number that will go to one of our persons.
That was my question.
Yeah, we will either, I mean, worst case scenario, we dispatch someone from here or we're talking through it, sometimes you talk or drive it through it. Or we'd have to look at kind of the service there and kind of... And we would come up with a plan on, okay, what are we going to do in North Ridge on a Friday night at 10 o'clock?
Get a room?
Yeah. Get a room. But, you know, good questions, good in common. You know, a lot of our clients will run, you know, all over. And we have special services for those. This is really, you know, a little bit more easier, more vocal.
And I guess my other question I had, I'll relate this to Roger. If this move is made, all of our employees have a job. Nobody's going to lose a job. Is that correct?
There's a change in employment potentially, but it would not affect the director of transportation or his assistant's position. It does not affect any bus drivers in terms of their position. It does affect the mechanic. It affects Mike Fisher, who is our mechanic right now.
For example, would Mike have the job where?
Yes, yes.
Would he be paid the same rate that we're paying him?
Right. That's the absolute commitment we've made from the beginning. So we're looking to hire technicians, so we welcome Mike. We need more technicians.
I had a question about the extracurricular activities. Now, forgive my ignorance, because I don't know exactly how it works, but like if we have an event to go to in the evening, they would have access to the bus? To come in and are they locked up? Are they behind a fence or how does that work there?
Right now, we... This is the level of detail that we've discussed, you know, kind of conceptually what we would do. The thinking at this point is that would be... All the buses would be locked up. Technician would come in first thing in the morning, unlock the gate, roll it open. So if the first bus driver got there, the buses would be available. All the buses would be returned in the, we call it the bullpen, for lack of a better term. And we would lock the gate when our people left the facility. Those bus drivers that had to have a bus out later than that, we would have to make a determination, do we want to give them a key? And does every bus driver get a key to the gate? Which we would be okay with, but I don't know what school's position would be on that. Or they could always park the bus in our lot, which most of our kind of customers do, and they could just leave it there overnight. We have very little, any, you know, instances of vehicles being vandalized or anything like that. So that particular case, which is the bus driver would have to know, I'm going to get back late. I need to leave my vehicle, my personal vehicle outside of the gate so that, you know, it's not locked up when they come back. But, you know, those are some of the details that need to be addressed.
I have a question for Roger then. I know we've been talking about this, and I know other school corporations have been talking about this. In the total picture, is this going to save our corporation money? Is it going to save our taxpayers' money?
I believe that in the long run, it will save money. I have over 15 years' experience working with transportation systems with a jobber situation. Never had the pleasure of having an outfit as big as Tom Weir's outfit to do that business with. But I ran a much larger transportation system than the one we have here in Kendallville for almost 10 years with a jobber situation. Did the same thing with a slightly different setup at John Glenn many years ago when I was superintendent there with two jobbers and doing the maintenance like that. And we did very well in terms of the per-vehicle costs and that. It's all in who you partner with and how you do it, quite frankly. Just like it's all in hiring the best employees. But I have every belief that in the long run, in fact, there will be a cost saving significantly.
You deal with... I'm sorry.
Well, I'm just going to conclude. I mean, I'm very familiar with Mr. Weir's and his business out there. And I know it's been very respectful and I certainly applaud you for that. And if this works out, I'm happy that it'll work.
You deal with fuel necessities?
We do not have fuel island on our property. We discussed that last meeting.
At present time, we use this, say, among Rick Run's process where he either bids out. Lately, we did the open market. We continue to do that in the same fashion till the foreseeable future.
Quick question, Tom, but it kind of goes along with our budgeting and all that. Under fixed monthly charges, kind of what all that encompasses? Is that normal encompassing?
Yeah, the... It's, I guess, I'm not going to be too detailed. So a normal labor rate is, we're all accustomed to taking our vehicles to a car dealer and having it repaired, and there's a labor rate that's posted on the wall. We view that, an agreement like this, as kind of a win-lose relationship because the more the service provider... the service provider bills, the more money they make, and the more downtime and cost the owner of the vehicle incurs. So if you take a look at a labor rate, it's really composed of three pieces. There's profit for the business, there's overhead, and there's the cost of technician. So what we do, and this is not necessarily a model that we created, but it's one we've adopted, excuse me, we take that, the profit and the overhead, and break that up into fixed fee. So now, there's no incentive to continue the bill, in fact, and then we charge basically our cost for the labor. So the incentive is to, without sacrificing quality, because we have inspections and such, you know, that we have to appear to, but the incentive there is to minimize, if you will, or optimize, I should say, the repair hours. So that's kind of how the program works. It's an industry standard, but it takes a partnership to make an arrangement like that really work.
This is more geared towards labor, I'm assuming materials parts would be an addition to that.
Correct. Yeah.
What we would be able to do, in fact, is access the same discount pricing that we do now. Rick is able to buy often at very big discounts on that, and we found we could do the same thing. We're kind of combination, we may decide how we buy something slightly differently depending on the pricing, because sometimes what you get individually is better than what you get in a group, and sometimes vice versa.
So we still take advantage of it?
We'll take advantage of whatever the best price is, and the analysis will be much more significant than what we've been able to do in the past, because that's what they do full-time, is to make those analyses for us and for all of our other customers.
Any other board members have questions for Mr.?
Figuring questions on the floor.
Yeah, Mr. Costello?
Paul.
I have some questions.
Oh, I'm sorry, Tom.
I was trying to figure out what order to go with here. Disagreement, Tom, and first of all, I think this is a great exercise, and Tom and your business has nothing but just a great reputation, so this is appreciated.
Sure.
The agreement is something we're working through, have we seen, have you seen this yet, or has this?
I have not received a final agreement, no.
But it's something we're working through, is that my understanding?
We, Sun Gionlin created our agreement, so, and I know you're often at Sun, so we talked, Roger and I talked, when was appropriate, when we did, now we're getting ahead of ourselves. It was appropriate to work through.
Ten years, this seems like a long time. I mean, is that a five and five, or are we just really looking at a ten-year agreement, like for a five-year, and we're doing for five, or are we just still talking through those? And I'm just picking on both sides.
Yeah, right, it is a long time. One, probably what we could, we're open to whatever. Dan wanted, you know, a long-term solution, because again, it's, it's easy to get out of, it's hard to get back into, right, the maintenance business. So what I was, what probably I would see us ending up with is like a ninety-day cancellation clause. So it's a ten-year agreement, and at any point in time, the school corporation could write us, and you can write us a letter and say, we're done.
But you, I mean, we can consider extent, I mean, we can have renewal clauses.
Sure, absolutely, yeah. I mean, we're flexible to that, it means no.
But how does the, here's a question out of ignorance, do all the buses come in every night?
No.
I think so. So that wouldn't change, I guess, I think that's going to be, that doesn't change, or how, those that don't come in won't still come in, and those that do do.
Probably share the same, yes.
Probably.
Have to make a judgment on all those, and, you know, some cases just simply are going to require that you keep one away because of the routing, because of other things, and from year to year, that could change, just like it could change right now.
Oh, I'm sorry, I guess I didn't quite understand. Are you talking about keeping like all the spares there and the after-curricular buses? I guess I lost your.
No, I guess I was under the assumption that not every bus comes back.
Stay-at-home buses.
Stay-at-home buses, thank you. They're drive-by, I mean, yours is stay-at-home, right? So that wouldn't change. Is there any, this, I guess, is more correct, changing location, what kind of impact do you see? Is there any?
Well, yeah, I do see that as far as trying to fuel buses, get them ready for field trips and stuff like that, because what it's going to entail, if we have to keep them at Weir's, then I have to go pick up that bus, bring it over gas, get it ready for the field trip or the extracurricular event that night, which, you know, that's not going to be easy to do. That's going to take a time.
So it would be a scheduling issue.
Scheduling issue. This bullpen is up, Tom, would that be just for our buses, or are there other users of this bullpen?
Right now, we use it for this lane, and there's a part that's mostly empty. I think what we want to do is lay out the, you know, parking arrangement, see what it is. We may have to expand it a bit to accommodate, and we certainly don't want to have any parking issues where it's difficult for the drivers and such. So we have, again, that's a level of detail that we're prepared to do, but we haven't done that yet.
Excuse my ignorance, is that a gravel pit?
No, it's gravel, sorry.
How does the insurance work?
Our coverage would be essentially the same. I know there's going to be some differences. I already talked with Gibson about that. The liability insurance that Tom carries on his business would cover from their side, and we would still carry the liability and insure the buses. They would be owned still by the district or, so there's going to be some differences to it, but not a whole lot of difference to it, you know, we can tell.
So generally speaking, we have, we have some school corporations to give you, most recently, one that parks the buses on our lot via the location of the fuel cost. So we got insurance, you know, they are taking care of insurance for their buses, under our lot, we have no responsibility if they get broken into or anything of that nature. So we would envision something similar here. Now, if the buses are in our facility, or if one of our employees, whatever, does something, you know, drives around the building and shapes it, we would have our insurance.
So much or something.
Yeah, right, exactly. It's not been a problem yet, but, and so, you know, when we're actively touching that vehicle or doing something with it, our insurance would be in place. And that's pretty standard.
Okay. Can you refresh my memory, Roger? How many buses is in our, forty-two?
Thirty buses and all kinds.
And this is talking about bus maintenance, other maintenance, we already handle, but some other vehicles in a different fashion. So we're talking about essentially transportation vehicles for buses, kids.
You mentioned, Tom, something about inspections, I didn't catch that. You do work for other corporations now to pass inspection, or are you doing inspections?
Well, we don't do this, the state police does the inspection. Every school corporation has annually, if the buses are twelve years old or newer, they handle inspection, the state police will come down and do, it used to be pretty much in the summer, but they've now changed that. So we would take responsibility getting the buses, make sure they pass inspection, if they didn't pass inspection, which happens occasionally, we would take responsibility getting that unit inspected and passed and holding out.
Any other questions from the board for Tom?
How's this impact law and mores, that sort of thing?
No, it won't, it won't impact those things. We do those in other, in other fashions. I mean, at times, Mike comes out with a maintenance thing for the maintenance guys, or Rick does, but for the most part, that's not, that's not a big part of what they do. Yeah, it's the buses.
Paul, yes, and to keep it fair, we're going to time it for two minutes.
Is there a problem with maintenance the way it is?
I can say that I'm very pleased, there's never been an issue with regard to the quality of what was being done, the work, not at all. We said that right from the very start. It doesn't have to do with that. What it has to do with is our limited, very scarce resources.
I remember forty years ago, about the age of that building, that they took the buses down to Winter Grove and the Walmart, wherever they could and get them fixed, and it was a massive, big investment on the part of the community to build this. And they said it would be, put all the, all the maintenance together, and you hire a mechanic. I worked under Stan Nickel and under Al Thomas, and with Rick, and it has always been handled in a meticulous manner, not flawless, but in a good, good manner. I don't think any of you would have an investment like that in the, that what's in them buses and, and go out and, and pull the garage out from under the, and take the maintenance somewhere else, and it's getting along well. And I don't see any problem with it, I, I.
I like to address that issue, maybe extends Paul's time a little bit, if that's the case. Forty years ago, a lot of things were different.
Shop rate was about twelve dollars a mile.
But forty years ago, a lot of things were different. I taught, taught sixth graders worse than elementary school over on Highway twenty-three, and taught in a lot of different ways, and the uses of things were a lot different, and the use of facilities. And quite frankly, we've got some plans, and Dan's a better person to talk about this than I am, of potentials for how we can better serve kids by using our facilities in different ways. And I'd ask you if you'd speak a little bit about some of the potential we've looked at.
Sure, I've, this is no secret, I've talked to, I've talked to Rick, and I've talked to Mike. This has nothing to do with quality. We are, we are very happy with the quality of the work that they're doing. This has to do with space. When we did our last building project, we promised our community that we would not use any, we would not, we would not build another school, add one to the school until the year 2020. And we need shop area for vocational classes. The state is putting some teeth into the vocational paths that our kids have to take. We have opportunities, real opportunities, to offer fantastic programs for kids to take so they can come out of school and go right into the market, they'll have the certification to go and get jobs. We've got companies in town, and in Marshall County, that are, that are talking about leaving the county, because we don't have a prepared work staff to fill the jobs that we have here. And so we're trying to meet those needs by creating vocational classes that kids can take, get certified, and be able to go right into jobs. And so as we do that, we don't have a place to put those. You can't put, you can't put a class, a shop type of class, just anywhere. And so we are, we are looking at using that for two to four different vocational programs. And so it's really our commitment to children and our commitment to the community as far as turning out a graduating senior who is able to stay in Marshall County, stay in Plymouth, and have gainful employment in one of the industries that's here. And so we're not doing this carelessly, we're not doing this thoughtlessly, we're not doing this to sacrifice anybody's career. We made a commitment to, when we looked at this, that it would, we would not, Mike would be, be able to go and work for Tom for the same wages that he makes here. And so it's, it's not a situation where we're doing this because of quality. I'm, I'm very happy with what Rick does, and with what, the shop that he runs, but I can use that space to turn it into instructional area for vocational programs. And that's the direction I think we need to go. So it has nothing to do with the quality.
Anyone else? Yes.
I have a couple of questions. First of all, for Tom, will there be?
Just, just, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Sherri Martin.
I understand.
Okay, I'm sorry. And I've driven school bus for twenty-nine years for Plymouth, and I must admit, I've never been afraid to take a bus out on the road because of the crew and the way they work. Are you going to have plug-ins for us during the winter out there? We have thirty-eight buses, you're probably going to have to plug in twenty-five of them, maybe. Have you got electrical out there in that bullpen where every bus will have their cord so that our buses will start in the morning when it's twenty-five below?
The answer is we do have electrical. We do have, when we built that area, we built it, like vehicles there. Again, we have, we need to take an assessment of, you know, how many buses are going to be parked there, and we need to do a little more homework on it, but it's our intent that that will be available.
Will you pay for that then, or is that going to be charged to the school?
You know, that hasn't been discussed. It's my understanding that we have, it's one of those details we have to talk about.
I'm sure we can supply the cords, we have those.
Yeah, so, I mean, I'm sure that's something that we'll have to talk about.
Okay. Another question is, the type of shops you're putting in there, wasn't the auto shop and a couple of the shops removed from the high school program? And now you want to, you need to bring them back because the state, I mean, our.
Our schedule plan has every inch of the high school being used.
But, I mean, hasn't the auto shop program been taken away from the school three, four, five years ago? Wasn't it removed from the school program?
There's a, there's a, there's an area vocational program that does the auto shop technology now in Knox, and students who take that program go there. It's probably the most robust auto, vocational auto program in the state of Indiana. Their kids get more certifications than any other program in the state. But again, while that space sits empty now, it won't be very, it won't be empty very long. Every inch of that high school is planned, has planned usage.
And that's not necessarily the locations you're talking about putting them out there?
That's correct.
And so our kids are still going to have to drive to Knox in order to get the. For that one.
Our kids have been doing that for the last ten years.
Well, that's what I'm saying, because they used to get here, so we both now we're in.
No, no, there was a, there was a, there was a automotive class here. They did not offer certifications, and the students did not get, the students did not take robust exams to show that they could go right into the industry and work.
Okay, but will, will, will there be a class like what was here, offered in this building?
No. That's not part of our plan.
So everybody that wants to do anything with auto works, auto will have to drive to Knox.
At this, at this time, that, we belong to an area vocational program, and that's where that program is located.
Have you, have you looked at buying a building around the area that would be close? I mean, like out in the industrial park, where there are buildings available for sale? And that to put your school?
That would, there would be a cost to that. Right now, we're talking about making it so there's no cost.
What happens if we get rid of all this equipment over here, and then say in two years, you decide it isn't working, it's too expensive? Where are you going to store all this equipment over here so that you will be able to just pull it out of the closet and use it? Once you get rid of all this equipment over here, won't it be very expensive to replace it, should this plan not work?
We're only going to make a change if we're convinced that the plan is going to work.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Can, can I do that?
That's a good question.
Yeah. I mean, I, I guess, you know, I'm looking at it from my standpoint here. I mean, the big thing is, is we're trying to find this space. Have we ever considered any of this space that we have over at the shop right now, like in the maintenance department, where they just park the trucks during the evening? Basically, don't use the shop during the day. The only thing is, they park their trucks in there in the evening. Once in a while, they use a work bench in there to work on something, but basically, they're in each school when they're working on something.
It's not, not the space in that area that there is in this area.
Ken, folks, my name, I have a question for you. Will the buses be washed by Weir's?
Actually, that came up in one of our discussions. It's my understanding, the bus drivers currently wash the buses themselves, and that's, that's what we propose.
We'll be able to place, we can get them washed. Will we have a place we can get them washed?
Yeah, we think that's what we can do.
What if some kid throws up on the bus? Do you have a place where we jack him up and wash him off?
Certainly, we can make that happen.
And we'd still be looking to ways to provide summer service for people needing buses. We do that now with college labor. Tom and I have talked about how we do that already.
Brenda Yucene, I have a question. Where more Rick and I go as far as staff?
Your office will stay right where it is.
foreseeable future, we don't look at changes.
As we look at those plans, they'll stay right where it is. I, you know, once we bring, once we bring in a person to do the planning or how that's, depending on the program that goes in there first, that could always change, but there will be, there will be a place for you if you're not going to come sit in my office.
Well, I guess with that in mind, if Rick gets to work before I get to work in the morning, and so he's kind of responsible for the drivers if there's issues about paperwork or new students. And then I come in at 7:30. So, you know, we have that interaction all the time with the drivers. So I guess that's if we are here and our drivers are there, then how do we have that?
Same way you do now. You talk on the radio, you meet some places, you do different plans. Presently, deal with emergencies that happen all over the district with good communication. So I'm sure they'll present different issues. But I also know that we'll find ways to be able to deal with those because I've done that. And it happens. It happens.
I misunderstood the question, Brenda. Were you asking, would there be a possibility of you starting your day there to field questions? Or is that something you were thinking of, you mean, before you come to this location?
Right. I guess I don't know what my question was because I...
So it's more you than me.
What'd you say? I'm saying if you have your group of bus drivers in one location, you know, my responsibility is I have a headset on, I have the whole day, and I get phone calls. And I give her a new stop or him a new stop, or I talk to Jenny. And we kick a kid off the bus all of a sudden, but we also don't want to chat on the radio. We don't want to break the privacy laws and we don't want to, you know, try to mention a kid's name. So that's my, we have a lot of that intercommunication. So would we be there?
Yeah, we have the same kind of communications between the seven buildings. They pick up the phone when they're done and they call me and they said, this is what happened and this is what we're going to do about it. The same thing would happen with you. They're not going to use, they're not going to use the phone when they're traveling, but when it's over with, you pick up the phone, you call the office.
Paul?
What we're reading from time to time, I'm not in building maintenance, but there's tractors, mowers, all the stuff from the building maintenance comes in there for repair. That kind of be a lost sheep out there.
Those things are not generally done by the bus maintenance personnel.
Yeah, yes, they are.
Yeah, they are. I guess that's the point of contention. We currently contract things out. We use deer when we need deer. We have our own maintenance guys that do repairs. We're talking here about bus maintenance, not about the other maintenance.
But they're in the shop lot.
Yeah. That probably will change some, too.
Anyone else? Yes?
Yeah, I'm Mike Fisher. I'm currently the mechanic at the bus garage. My question's for Tom. He stated I would pay the same wage. Okay, I've got over seven years here. Why continue a seniority program? I've acquired three weeks vacation. I've got a perf. Nobody's talked to me about this, so I don't know anything. This is the first I heard that I'm going to get paid the same. I was said I was going to be offered a competitive wage, but I didn't know I was going to be paid the same.
We have the information. Mike, you can come in tomorrow morning and we'll go through it. If you want to sit down and talk to their HR person, you certainly do that.
That'd be great. Appreciate that.
Sure.
I would hope that no one has intention that Mike will lose benefits after over seven years.
Any others?
Carol, do we have 58 drivers? How many drivers do we have?
More than 30.
There's everyone that can drive a bus. There's right around 50. That's including subs and regular drivers, maintenance personnel.
Thank you. Any other questions?
The recommendation I have for you at this time is to authorize us to ask Tom and Sonny Wyland, their attorney, to go ahead with drafting the rest of that agreement so Jeff can work with us to assess that. Clearly, if Sonny Wyland writes the agreement, I want my attorney to check it very carefully. If you don't know, we went to high school together. But I know that we've got a lot of work and detail to do. We've got ample time to get that done in. Next meeting is June, May 15 for the next meeting. Regular meeting is June 5. And my plan would be if we can work out the right details that we'll have a formal agreement proposal for you at that point. And then that would give us a month if you agree for us to get ready to move ahead for the July 1 day. And so that's the recommendation at this time. Please give us the authority to be able to move ahead so we can provide more of the details for you.
Do you have a motion?
I would make a motion to provide authority to have Mike and his attorney work in agreement that Jeff and we can consider. Obviously, that's not approval. That's a motion to keep things moving.
All right. A little motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those know?
Make sure everybody cares about what we do.
We appreciate your attendance at this meeting and your input. All right. Item 3.4, review handbooks, K-6.
I believe we have two principals here tonight. If you don't, it's Tershen. We'll talk about the two schools that have handbooks at those levels.
We had turned in the highlights of, I think it's mine, I figured, like what the F H were. Just updated some of the wording, Mike, if I might, but that. And with the technology, we're going to add some bullet points, being a responsible citizen in technology. So if you have any, if they're excited, we're doing standards-based, we put cards for fifth grade. So we added that in. So are there any questions?
I have one question. The one area, and it's on page eight, but it talks about lockdown, fire, tornado drills. It looks like lockdown was an added.
It used to be code red, but that's the new terminology.
That's a change. It doesn't really explain what happens during the lockdown, or maybe it didn't before either.
Teachers have that information?
Mm-hmm. These are our teachers.
And it would be in the safe, publish it in the handbook. It doesn't get published for safety reasons.
Right. No, I didn't realize what the change was. I didn't know if that was a totally new item.
It's new terminology.
Okay.
Anybody have any questions for Kenny? Thank you.
Did you guys have any questions about elementary? Where do I start? Just a quick update, since this is my first time doing elementary handbook for you guys. I know you like, care of detail. We've kind of tried to make consistency in language. And I think I changed 120 some grammatical errors for you. Promotion, placement, retention is an area you need to look at. With the new public law 109 on the new i-read with grade three, we had to add some language there so that we can inform our parents. In multiple ways, we do a nice job informing seven, eight times during the year about it. But it's a nice way to, again, remind them that this is a public law that we have to adhere to. So just changes of the times. We'll see changes from testing to assessment because assessment, we assess kids in multiple ways. It's not on test anymore. So we'll see some changing there. And the biggest change that we've made, actually, it's K-12, but tonight for K-6, the biggest change for us is on attendance. And it's a positive change for not just us, but our families. We made a policy change, basically, with the way we're going to identify reports and hold parents accountable for attendance. And what we ended up doing is we started everybody in a blanket policy at 3, 6, and went on from there. And what we realized after we did this was, we're identifying people and analyzing the parents who we didn't need to really address. And so we freed up some of that language and created more of an intervention-based model where we intervene when it's appropriate with the people we need to so that we don't have parents emailing and calling and getting really hostile over a three-day letter or a six-day letter. Because let's be real, three days is still above the 97% of attendance rate. And these are parents who do care and have taken the time to let us know. But of course, they've done the after-effect, and then we've sent them a nasty letter saying, this was undocumented. It goes down the list. So we've made some positive changes there which we think will really enhance not just PR, but actually help parents understand we are flexible, but also for them to step up and do their jobs.
You know, I saw that and thank you. Just seemed like a fix.
I think, speaking for all administrators, that I would say that I don't know that the intention originally...
Right.
And I think once we were cognizant of that, we realized it was a change that needed to be made. And we're not perfect. And I think that's what's kind of neat about doing an annual. And we actually made this change now.
Thank you. You said, you're welcome.
Any other questions for Mike? Thank you.
Good job. Appreciate the time and effort you put into those handbooks. It's not easy.
Item 3.5, review handbook, 7 to 12.
I'll go first. Are there any questions? The highlighted yellow area were changes. Are there any questions specifically that are in here? There are any? No, the only specific thing I'll mention was in promotion, placement, retention. Okay? We looked at our board policy and we put some procedures in our handbook that will help us take action that's in line with the board policy. Put in action some expectations for students, but also expectations for us as staff at Lincoln so that we can help those kids be more successful.
Thanks, Reed.
I'd like Reed, I had earlier submitted you guys actually just sort of summaries the proposed changes and then also highlighted them in the handbook. Do you have any questions about those changes?
Anybody have any questions for Ken? Thank you.
What I appreciate about the four administrators that just spoke is their willingness to look at a K through 12 handbook and making things easy to follow, similar, yet taking into account the developmental ages as they go building. That was something that we've talked about a long time. In the last couple of years, we've really gotten to that point. So I appreciate your hard work.
I might add, we have to discuss having a K-12 so you're not looking at 4. Just with some minor changes, because it's called, oh, they'll be online.
Yeah. It came to me about a month ago. I wanted to know. And I said, let's wait until next year.
I think it's a good idea, though.
It is a good idea, but I want to have plenty of time to make it work.
Thank you all. Carol?
So parents will get a copy of this registration? Did I just understand it'll be online before then or at registration?
No copies.
It'll be available online.
Will they sign something?
They do.
So they need to look at it before they enter registration?
Right. That's my question.
I believe the thing says that they promise they will look at it. If I'm not correct, that's the way it should read because all parents aren't going to look at it beforehand.
Right. But they can need it online prior to registration. Thank you.
It'll be ready after this meeting.
Thank you.
We want to take any action on those, right?
Nope.
Okay. Item 3.6, consider K-6 textbook fees.
Yep. Textbook fees are in here. Mike, you want to start with K through 4? We tried to make an addition tonight to Mike's beforehand. We may have screwed it up, Mike, so I'll help you as we go.
No, I think we got this correct.
Did we? Okay.
So you'll see K through, KN1, there, we're adding, of course, we're moving to technology. And we're going to see, we're going to recommend to the board that K is $157 total for textbook. And that would include a technology fee. And first grade, we'll recommend $169. And again, that'll be a tech fee. And we're looking at, in our systematic plan, for iPads for KN1. So move to second, third, and fourth grade, you'll see an added technology fee. And again, we're moving, as you've heard, a one-to-one platform from second grade to 12th grade. It'll be next year. And so we've added in that cost. And I will mention that cost is more than reasonable since the charge that we're asking is not even close to one-fifth of what we would charge to, say, a regular text or supply. So second grade, we're recommending at $197, third grade $161, and fourth grade $158. And all those includes all of the tech that we are, again, promoting from keyboarding to use some of, like, sort of MacBook or whatever technology.
Okay, forgive me, Mike, but how does that compare to what was last year's charge?
KN1 is a $50 increase, and 2 through 4 is a $75 increase.
Because of the technology?
Yes.
Okay.
And again, if you look at, costs of MacBooks around 150. So we're charging $75. And again, they can take it home. They can do pretty much legally what they like to do.
Buy a computer for $75.
You can't run it for that cost.
Anybody have any questions for Mike?
I think, I don't know about the other schools that have gone one-to-one, but I do remember reading that a school north of us was charging the entire amount. So it was $950. They were dividing that by four, and that's what you're paying. What we've been able to do with grants that our people write just continuously and with our CPF fund, even though it's diminishing somewhat, we've been able to supplement the cost of the technology at a great savings for parents. There's no way that they could create the technology that we're able to put in their hands.
Thanks, Mike. Oh, Liz?
I was just asking, for the Washington Discovery Academy, is that the same for them or is that different?
Yes, same price.
Same price.
Same price.
Jenny?
Okay, fifth grade, we run a $55 increase. For next year, we did add the technology fee. We were able to take out, we had a music fee and an art fee, so we took those out. So they're not getting that $75 fee. So it's reasonable and it's, I think, lower than yours, so. And then, so it's a $55 increase. At sixth grade, we had put in a smaller technology fee last year. We went $20, because our science went to a tech book. And then we, again, we took away the art and music fee that we had in. And so it's ranging, depending on if they take band or choir or no band or choir, it ranges from $12 to $22.
They still have art and music, though, right?
Yes.
This could be different.
We just, they don't use a lot.
Do you have any questions for Jenny?
Can I ask what those fees are?
Sure. In fifth grade, the fee will be $166. Now, in sixth grade, you're ready. If they take band, it's $161. If they take choir, it's $157. If they take choir and band, $163. And with no band or choir, $155. Thank you.
Question? All right. I would entertain a motion to adopt these fees. As presented.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, no.
I meant to say aye. I'm sorry.
Can't do two things at once? All right. Motion carries. Is there my vote?
I think so.
Thank you.
Can I assume that the take-home part of it will depend upon when the teachers feel they're responsible, up to you?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
What was the question?
Can I assume that being able to take them home would depend on the teacher's evaluation, the principal's evaluation?
We've had the second grade laptop program for quite a while, and they've taken their computers home, but it's not every night.
Right.
And it's as needed and as taught, as learned.
Thank you.
Item 3.7, consider policy revisions.
Melissa, last month, we had a whole passover. I know you appreciate not having that many. Look at this time. Bill with two, bylaw 0167.5 and policy 1520, that there was some worrying that nobody was very happy with. We looked at it over and over again. And deleted a section, so what you have before you tonight is the final version. We talked about with that piece of language out for bylaw. And on 1520, we had left in initially just the stock list of administrative positions. And said, well, maybe we're going to have to take a look at the specific ones that we have in our guidelines. So that's what's specifically in here now. It doesn't mean every position is necessarily filled every time. But all the positions are listed as the titles are in our current iteration of positions. So we record your approval of those two policies.
Move if your policy's been approved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Roger. That may be the longest approval of policies in the history of history of assistant superintendence, but we appreciate it.
I think I get an award from Neola for that.
I think it worked out the best.
Yes, it did.
I appreciate everybody's input. Okay, item 3.8, consider additional appropriation for debt service fund.
Candy?
Yes, we advertised, I noticed to taxpayers on April 7th about the additional appropriations for a debt we incurred kind of after I had already done the appropriations for the 2012 year. And so I'm just asking, does that be approved for additional appropriations? It's $36,000 additional for debt service.
I would entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? Anybody have questions for Candy? We talked about it before.
The, is this a hearing? Do you have to have a hearing?
On this, essentially, essentially it is, yeah.
I don't have any questions.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Item 3.9, consider Washington Discovery Academy principal.
Well, originally, this wasn't on the docket tonight. And however, in updating the board on the direction the committee wanted us to go last night and the need for posting, we put it on the agenda because we need to get things posted. But I would like happily to recommend the Washington Discovery Academy principal for next year be Andrew Hartman. Andrew, I have highlight just a little bit about Andrew. And I have, I have some things for the press. My apologies, but he is a graduate of Manchester College. He has his, he has his, I didn't say a word. He has his master's in administration and in education from Butler University. And his EDS soon to be completed from Indiana State. He was originally trained to be an elementary teacher. He has worked in the middle school, or some of the grades would be upper elementary, depending on the school. And has worked for us in the last few years as an assistant principal. So Andrew comes very well-trained. He's been very active in the project-based learning that we've worked on this year. And I think we had three committees last night. And we had a parent committee, we had a teacher committee, and we had administration committee. And Andy came out on top on those committees. So I'd like to make that recommendation tonight to the board.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? You want to say anything, Andrew?
Just really thank you for the opportunity. It's been a blessing to be here the past four years. And I look forward to serving Washington community and the schools for a long time to come.
That's a big legacy, because that's where I went to, in the school. So I'll be watching.
My wife did as well, so.
She trumps me. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Jim, have a statement?
I would like to thank the board for giving Andy this opportunity. I've been doing this a long time. I don't even remember the number of years that I'm on in terms of being a building principal. And I've had some really good assistant principals, but I'm being very honest, Andy is the best assistant principal I've ever had.
I thought you were thanking us for getting the building.
In terms of developing collaborative skills, motivating people, having a vision for what needs to be done, just taking care of business. His relationship building with people is unmatched. I look forward to seeing what he produces at that school. And I thank the board for recognizing his talent.
And for giving you an extra two weeks to hire us.
I really thank you for that.
That's what I thought you were going to say.
Thanks, Jim. Appreciate those words.
Congratulations, Andy.
Yes, congratulations, Andy. I'm forward to working with you. All right, item 3.10, consider Lincoln Junior High School principal.
Well, again, we are going to appoint one of our own. Speaks highly of the training that our principals have given their assistants. Because I can tell you from interviewing, that's not always the case. Sometimes we get assistants and all they can talk about are attendance and discipline. And our people are able to talk about all facets of school. But for Lincoln Junior High, the committees were very, as a matter of fact, I got a text message from the teacher group. It said, we want to make sure you know that we are suggesting Reed Gault be the principal, if we didn't make that clear. So I'd like to recommend him to the board, Reed Gault be the principal at Lincoln Junior High. He is a graduate of Butler University. He also was, no, he went to graduate from Butler University, graduated from Indiana University, and then got his educational leadership from the University of Indianapolis. Reed was with us as an assistant principal for several years, went to Lowell as the principal of a brand-new building. And because of some issues with the market and not being able to move houses, it was just fortunate for him and for us that we had a position and he can come back with us. So we sent him out to get some experience on being a principal, and now he's coming back and he's going to get, he's going to benefit us for that experience he got. So I'd please direct him, Reed, as Lincoln Junior High principal.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? You want to say something, Reed?
I'd just like to thank all of you, you know, for hiring me for a third time. You know, in a matter of five years, this is a great place, and I'm glad I'm here and I'm glad I'm back. And I've learned a lot, and I will continue to learn a lot from our staff and from administrative team.
All in favor of Reed as Lincoln Junior High principal, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no?
Could I ask them to stay for a full walk for two minutes?
Sure you could. They wore matching shirts.
And we appreciate you coming back. Appreciate you coming in.
Yes, I could.
Okay. Item 4.0, superintendent's remarks.
Just go quickly. Commitment to students, I'd like to thank, celebrate tomorrow the accomplishments and the end of a career for a dozen or so teachers who have served one of the community schools for a long time. And so I would be remiss if I didn't thank them in public at the meeting for a lead service to our school. Karen?
Excuse me. What time is it?
Four o'clock.
Four o'clock. To Red Rock?
Yep. I'd like to thank Sandy and the city of Plymouth, Jefferson, and Riverside. They are working on a grant that would provide sidewalks, better sidewalks on Baker and Clinger Street. And just hope we get the grant, because that's really something that's needed. For high expectations, I'd like to congratulate the Plymouth third graders. Thirty-three of them, 93% of them legitimately passed the I read test. We believe, once we get our exempted students status back, there will be 98%. So that's congratulations to the third graders, but also the parents and teachers for hard work. Because that's a benchmark that's, I think, is, not sure that I agree with it, but kids need to read. So how we get there is, sometimes we use other people's methods, but that's an important benchmark. Team player, I'd like to thank the state police, the city police, and Enviro Corp., as well as our own maintenance director, David Shoep. And, excuse me, it changed, we changed his title. He's the facilities director now. And Dr. Smith, I was extremely busy when this came up, but we've got, we had two meth labs. And we've been given a clean bill of health. Our dirt is safe. So that's good news, because that would have been expensive to clean up. Integrity, recently, the board and our office went through some training to use these board docs. And, you know, it's going to take us a little while to get used to it. And we didn't do this because it was easier for us. We did this because it is more transparent to the community. This is available to anybody. So, you know, especially me, we're not all zipped through this. So it takes a lot of hard work to get up here in front of a packed house like we had tonight on our first time. So thanks to Sandy and Bruce and everybody who's helped us with the training. And, but I do want to say, you know, we're doing this to be as transparent as we can be to the community at all times. Finally, enjoyment, Plymouth High School will be presenting Disney's musical Beauty and the Beast Friday and Saturday night at 7:30. And I think you, staff members and board members, got an email about a complimentary ticket. Also, and, you know, we had a new tech grant that Jennifer Falke wrote for the community foundation for $25,000. Michelle Reese wrote another grant to the DOE for special education for $70,000. And we just found out today that Deb Sherwood was awarded $30,000 additional dollars for adult education. So in times where other schools are cutting and holding referendos to keep their schools open, we have the ability to add additional programs and teachers and continue to make education thrive in Plymouth. And it takes everybody in this room, all 450 people that we have at our school corporation, to make that happen, because they work hard. We have a special meeting on May 15th, an executive session at 6:30. That's, we don't have to have that anymore. So we don't have to have the executive session anymore. So we'll have just a regular meeting at 7 o'clock. And then the first meeting, or the meeting in June is June 50. And there will be an executive session, so you can grow me, that's my evaluation, at 6:30 unless you need longer.
AM?
6:30. And that will be Roger's last meeting, unless we call another special meeting.
We should.
Roger's last meeting.
We might have to.
So we might have to have some festivities that night, so.
Later meetings I'll be back, because I'm crazy.
That's all I have.
Thank you. All right. Item 5.1, audience participation. Anyone want to comment on any of the agenda items? All right. Item 6.1, adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? I have one thing I want to say. I just want to compliment Mr. Pinkerton on his use of technology. He is, he's a self-proclaimed technology hater, and he has done fabulously, I think.
I'm just, I'm back here going, this is great.
It's been difficult, but I had a good teacher.
All right. All in favor of adjournance, say aye.
Aye.